Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the school committee meeting of this Wednesday, September 5th. It is now seven o'clock. Let's call the meeting to order. Reminder that we are being broadcast live and recorded for future rebroadcast. Could we all please rise for this? Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, the representative states, one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
Thank you. We do not have a student representative tonight. We will be starting that next week, I believe, with the high school up first. Any public comment with regards to anything not on our agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on. Any old business anyone wants to drag up tonight? Any new business? Okay, we'll move on to superintendent's report then.
Thank you very much. So, the race to full staffing has been interesting. We're still not quite there, but we are closing in on it. Since the last time we met, we have hired some additional teaching staff, so I wanted to share with you some of the information on that, on the hires. So, the first is Jennifer Fleming, who is joining the middle school as a long-term substitute for science. She lives in Spencer. She has her bachelor's of science from Worcester State University in 2017. She has done some long-term sub-work in Dudley-Chowton, as well as the Waukesha Regional School District, and she also has done her student teaching in biology at Waukesha Regional High School. She has a number of years working in veterinary hospitals in central Massachusetts as well. So, she is joining us for the beginning of the school year in science at the middle school.
Can I just interrupt for one second?
Yep.
So, this is not the case Matthew Cole?
No. Matthew Cole is something coming up in a minute.
Oh.
Michael Cole.
Sorry, I got that.
Yep. Rebecca Chapman. Rebecca is joining the high school. She is from, lives in Waltham. She's a 1.0 biology teacher here at the high school. She has her bachelor's of science from Framingham State in 2014, where she majored in biology and secondary education was her minor. She is presently working on her masters through American International College. She has taught biology at Chelsea and Milton and Lexington, and she did her student teaching in Newton South High School. At the high school, we have added William Hillman. He is going to be a 1.0 business education teacher here at the high school. He lives in Grafton. He has a bachelor's of science from Keene State in New Hampshire with a degree in business and English. He has a master's degree from Suffolk University in Boston in business and finance. He received that in 2007. Bill has 16 years of experience in finance. He worked at State Street Corporation, so he's been, he's looking for a change, and he began substituting last year. Did some substituting, I believe, at the middle school, and he has an interest in the business area, so we have reached out to him. This will be his first teaching experience. He is being, he's working right now in collaboration with Mrs. Gaskell, who everybody knows is retiring at the end of September. So, he's getting some assistance from her, and he's come on and he's taking over the business courses. And then lastly, hired at the high school is Alicia Leclerc, who is from Northbridge. She is serving in the capacity of a 1.0 Spanish teacher here at the high school. Bachelor of Arts in Spanish Linguistics and Latin American Studies from UMass Amherst in 2017. She did a long-term sub-position at Boston Latin last year. She has two years' experience as the linguistics research assistant at UMass Amherst, and this is also her first full-time teaching experience with her own classroom here at Douglas. We are presently still looking for, correct me if I'm wrong on this, everyone, but I believe it's one para at the primary school, two paras at the elementary school, one para at the middle school, a .2 librarian at the primary school, and a .5 custodian. And I believe that the high school has finalized two paras this week, so we believe that they are completed.
We have totally.
And how many paras did you have to hire this year?
I'm pretty sure it was 11.
A lot of people leave the district, so.
Yeah. The primary school and the library, but a library para.
Library para, I'm sorry, yes. Library para, yes.
That's fine.
So, those are the new hires, and those are the positions that we're looking to hire.
Great.
And then Scott, did you, did you have the slides? One of the things that I'd like to share with you, and some of you saw this when we did the opening day ceremony, but there were some of you who could not attend, so I wanted to share with you. Each year, at the beginning of the school year, we recognize staff members for longevity, and so this year, we did the same. And this year, we were sure to expand it, and we included all staff members. So, custodians, cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals. So, if I could share with you, our cafeteria staff. Charlene Luco has been with the district for between 20 and 24 years, and Maggie Lapierre has been with us for between 30 and 35 years in the cafeteria, so we acknowledge them. For our custodial staff, Jeff Collette has been with us for better than 20 years. We recognize him. Secretarial staff, Kathy Brosnahan here at the high school in the guidance department has been here for better than 25 years, so we recognize her. For our paraprofessionals, with better than 20 years, we have Laurie Revard and Carmen Davis. And with better than 30 years as paraprofessionals, Linda Hopkinson and Carol Manning, who is outside marching along with the band right now. So, obviously, we acknowledge them for their many years of service. Then we went to the teachers and looked at the teachers. Those with 20 years or more, we have Stephanie Tomelio, Melissa Mover, Ed LaChappelle, Emily Mayo, Michelle Forrest, Sandra Lancaster, Diane Whuppo, Lynn Gaskell, and Kim Bertheum. So, they have 20 to 24 years. With 25 to 29 years, we have Mary Sokel, Paul Leonard, Nancy Doyle, Alden Encore, Danielle Hipit, Kathy Jost, and Kate Gilrain. And then with 30 to, should be up there, I don't, I think we're missing one slide, but with 30 to 34 years, was Nancy Dupree? Help me, everybody, was Nancy Dupree? Was Kathy Garthier?
Dajene.
And Stephanie Dajene. Very good, thank you. Well, I don't know why, we must have missed that slide when we put it up there, but, and then our, we didn't, now that she's not here, we can recognize Maria properly, because she does not want to be recognized for having years of service, but she is our most senior teacher with 36 years. So, we thank all of them, we recognize all of them, and acknowledge their longevity within the department. One of the things is that we had 26 staff members who either resigned or took positions elsewhere, or left for other job employment. So, we have replaced all of those, except for the paras that I mentioned to you. We're just finishing up the last few as we get closer and closer. So, there is the issue of longevity, and then I believe, I'm hoping that we have a picture for you to take a look at. I got Scott jumping all over the place back there. Thanks, Scott.
I actually wanted to set the projector up, I didn't want to.
That's okay. So, we graciously received a gift from a Michael Coyle from in town, and he graciously donated to us a piano, which presently resides in the music room at the middle school. It is being used every day. Extremely grateful for his wonderful gift, his generosity. We did send a thank you card along to him, and we thank him for thinking of us and reaching out to us and allowing us to use that piano now going forward, which is really a nice piano, and as soon as we get this lighted up, you'll see how wonderful it is. So, I wanted to acknowledge him today in public as well, as well as the letter that would, the thank you card that we sent him.
We could turn this around.
Yeah, if we turn this, if we turn the monitor around real quickly, you guys can get a look at it, because these guys have already seen it.
Very nice.
That's the piano that he donated to us. And Mr. Pacico has been very happy and very pleased that he has it. He's been using it a lot.
That's great.
So, thank you very much, Mr. Coyle from Douglas, for donating that piano for us.
That's great.
Okay.
There we go.
There it is. It's coming up.
Actually, you can see it better here, though.
So, traditionally, we do our district opening report, so I'll start with the superintendent's report. The opening day went very well. Changed the format a little bit, so all of the staff members reported to their schools for the initial meetings from 8:00 to 9:45. Then we all came together at 10 o'clock at the high school. In that meeting, we thanked all of our town officials, town departments. Most importantly, we expressed our humble gratitude to the taxpayers of Douglas, speaking to, knowing that this was a significant undertaking for people to approve the override referendum. And we challenged our staff members to equal this commitment and dedication going forward. We introduced all of our new hires. We introduced the town officials as well, recognized all of them. We recognized all of our new hires. We recognized, we covered all of our health mandates, we covered our civil rights mandates, our special education mandates. We covered all of that. Let's see. We had a brief musical interlude, featuring the house band here at the high school, the Hortons, doing Teacher Children, which was warmly received. I may have done a slight shuffle along the way somewhere during the event, and we had a guest speaker. And we were, I'd like to publicly acknowledge that we were grateful that Commissioner of Education Jeffrey Riley came to the district, spoke with our staff, had a wonderful presentation. I've heard a lot of favorable reviews from people who were very impressed by his presentation. And so, I thought that the district opening day went very well. And so, with that, if Mrs. Sosha and Mrs. Urquhart could join us for special education and the primary school, and then we'll ask Harpo Chico and Ralcho to come up afterwards.
You know I'm wearing.
You don't remember the Mas Brothers? Nobody remembers the Mas Brothers?
All right. Good evening.
Mrs. Urquhart is battling a little bit of a cold.
I am. A little bit of the.
She's been soldiering on.
I'm okay. I'm on antibiotics. I feel good. Life is good. All right, so, beginning of the year has been very smooth, almost frighteningly smooth. No, everything's been going really, really well. I think that the teachers, a lot of the teachers came in over the summer. There was a great deal of preparation that went on. I think there was a lot of collaboration that went on with the principals and the entire administration with the teachers to prepare for the school year, so that's been great. To date, Laura and I have met with all the special education staff. They're very prepared for the year. They're very prepared, not only for the kids, but there's a real focus this year on collaboration and working with general education to make sure that our co-teaching models are what they need to be. Tomorrow, we're going to meet with the paraprofessionals. And because we're so blessed to have the commissioner, we did not have the opportunity to meet with the staff the way we typically do. So, we're going to meet with them and just go over all the details, you know, and make sure that we respect the fact that they are such an integral part of our classrooms. And in many ways, the pillars of what we do each day. So, we're going to do that. I did meet with all of the 504 coordinators. Do you want me to explain what 504 is again?
Sure, why not?
Okay. So, 504 is a general education accommodation plan. So, we're special education, or excuse me, IEP is a special education document. This is more of a general education document that is still mandated to follow. So, met with all of them, made sure that everybody is up to date on any laws, regulations that might be put in place by the Department of Ed. So, that is that. So, we're all set. Staff is really ready to go and head into the year. Just a little plug for our DPAC. We have some real dedicated parents, and we want to continue to really grow that support staff, or support unit, excuse me, for the families. So, if families who have kids that have disabilities are interested in having people that can talk about some of the things that you deal with when you have a student that has a disability, it's a great group to be a part of. They have a Facebook page, as well as a Twitter account, so you can definitely reach out. The meetings are on Thursday nights at 7:00. Is it, have they decided third Thursday of each month?
It's consistent, but the first one is tomorrow.
The first one is tomorrow night. We know that much. So, you know, we can certainly get you a schedule on that if need be. We have updated our website. We're very proud of this. This has been a work in progress for years, and we're hoping that there's good information on there. So, if we have parents from, whether they're in the district or outside of the district, if people are looking for information about our special education programs, we're able to get them that information now. So, please check that out. Friday night is the first night of T Night Out, which is a program that we participate in with Menden, Upton, Grafton, Hope Dale, and now Sutton. And basically, it's an opportunity for high school students who have intensive disabilities to meet peers and form relationships. And we do all sorts of things, like go to the zoo, have dances, have dinners, all sorts of things, movies. So, that is something, whether the student is in district here going to school, or part of an out-of-district placement, the student can definitely participate in that. Just want to talk about child find obligation. This is not something that I've ever come out here, up here and discussed, but something that's very important. Child find is something that each district is mandated to do. And basically, it's an obligation to locate, identify, and evaluate any child that resides in a particular town, this being Douglas, ages 3 to 32, no, 22, who may have a disability, 32 would be a lot, who have a disability and may require services through Special Letter 504. So, if you do hear of any student that has a disability, that for whatever reason might not be going to school or like that, please contact either Laura and I, and get us that information so we can reach out. Last thing is the coordinated program review. We have our last progress report that will be completed by Friday, and then we'll be done. It'll be clean slate, so. That is it. Does anybody have any questions?
Couple. So, one plug, we've got regards to DPAC. I know they already have a Halloween dance planned, which I think they've done the last couple of years.
Yes.
I came up with the date, but I don't know if you know it offhand, but.
I do not know the date offhand.
Sure. Our next meeting, we should have plugged that.
October, we'll plug that.
Look forward to that.
No doubt.
They do a great job with that. On the paraprofessionals, so is four open right now? There's been a lot of turnover. Is that heavier than usual? Is it unusual to have four open positions as long as you do right now?
It's not unusual to have four open positions this time of year, simply because, you know, I think that we make every effort that we can to make sure that we're finding the right people.
Yep.
We have had a lot of turnover this summer. I'm not going to pretend that we haven't. In many ways, our ABAs have been sustained more than our paraprofessionals, but there has still been a large amount of turnover with the ABAs. So, what we've done this summer is we've, you know, we've made sure that we've found people that can satisfy the position. Thing with paraprofessionals and ABAs is that many of these people want to be teachers. Many of these people hold teacher licensure. So, what happens is, you know, they may be going for their master's degree, they might have particular circumstances that, you know, make them, you know, want to stay in a paraprofessional position or an ABA position at a particular time. And then when an opportunity comes, once they're done with their schooling, they go and they satisfy that desire, so.
And with the openings, is it just a case of you have maybe students that should be in one-to-one or in two-to-one in the meantime?
You know, we actually, the one-to-ones, we were able, the majority of our one-to-ones were ABAs.
Okay.
So, we were able to find ABAs that could satisfy those needs quickly. The ABAs were hired much quicker than the paras. You know, the, we're going to talk about this a little later. But, you know, a paraprofessional position is a very intense position, and a lot goes into it. You have to have a particular skill set and a particular level of academic knowledge. And there's also an element of stress, and, you know, we talk about it all the time, that the social-emotional piece of things is also a part of the classroom now. You know, so you have the social-emotional as well as the academic. So, when you pair those together, you know, again, when people are looking for stepping-stone situations, they may be more apt to stay in a paraprofessional position. But, there does come a point that if they're not being financially reimbursed in the way that they need to be, according to the challenges of the job, that can be a difficult situation. And I think we came up against a little of that this summer.
Great. Thanks.
Some of the reason for openings also is timing. People taking jobs elsewhere right before the start of the school year, and that kind of puts you behind the eight ball a little bit as well. So, that has happened, even with teaching. People have left at the last minute for teaching musicians within the district as well. It seems to always happen every August. So, thank you, Mrs. Urquhart.
Any tea?
Mrs. Sosha. It's had a very smooth, very uneventful start to the school year?
Yes. How many ways can we say hi? It's really great to be back, though. Primary school opened with 32 full-day preschoolers, 25 half-day, 85 in kindergarten, and 81 first graders, for a total of 223 students. And we do have a waiting list for preschool.
Wow.
And I have to say, the kids are cuter than ever. So, if you want cuteness, come to my building. Their backpacks, and their lunchboxes, and their sneakers that light up, they're just too cute, so come on by. We welcome one new teacher in grade one, Kate Machet, and she is so excited. She hasn't stopped smiling since we appointed her, I think, in June. So, her room is amazing, and she's already off to a great start. Opening day, we didn't have any tears from the kids, a few tears from parents, but I told them if they were going to cry, they couldn't stay in front of the school. They had to go on their way. So, it was, it was a great day, and the kids did great. And despite the heat, I know it wasn't really that hot in my building, but teachers, staff, students, parents, everybody's been really flexible. The other administrators have been great. They welcomed our kids into the elementary school, into the middle school. One day, it was a movie in the middle school. The other day, it was full-fledged. You know, they're in classrooms, they're eating lunch, and everything was smooth. And I apologize for the many one-calls, but we have to do it. Preschool, we chose not to move, just because of their age, but we did load them up with fans, and parents had the option of keeping them home on the hot days or dismissing them at half-day. They also have one room in the building that they can take the kids into, which they did, into the teacher lunchroom, which is air-conditioned. So, they've been managing, too. And it's amazing to see all the full-day preschoolers. They look like a regular kindergarten class, so they're having a good time. We began our introductory Spanish today, where the kids are going to be getting 20 minutes of Spanish every other week. So, they started with five classes today, and that's on a volunteer basis by a parent. And I wanted to give her a great big thank you. Natalia Hochin is doing that for us.
That's very nice.
Thank you.
Open house in our book fair will be running on Tuesday, September 11th, from 5:30 to 7:00, and we have a special appearance by Clifford.
No way!
Yes, we do. The first Curriculum Coffee, which is also school council, is on Thursday, the 13th, at 10 o'clock.
Great.
That's all I have. Hoping for cool weather, please.
Maybe next week.
Friday on, maybe?
Yeah.
I'll even take rain.
You could use some rain.
So, if I could just jump in as well, and also acknowledge Cindy and her staff for their flexibility, and all of her staff for their flexibility, for the patience of our parents. We did, we have done a lot of one-calls, but we felt it was really important to let parents know what we were doing with regards to their children being in the building. As she mentioned, we did, we did a movie day, we did an early release day, we did a move to middle school and elementary school one day, and we are planning on that tomorrow as well, that the K and 1 will go back to the same rooms they were in yesterday. But I would also like to shout out all of the people that have helped us to make sure we get the kids back and forth safely. We've got roads blocked off with tractors and trucks and police officers and so forth, and it's been, it's been a parade, and we've all been out there getting them up and getting them back and so forth. But I would also be remiss if we didn't acknowledge John at the elementary school for having the ability to house a number of the students there, setting up classrooms, and Brian and Matt for their getting, well, Matt is both buildings, but Brian and Matt for getting the middle school set up. Brian and the rest of the, some of his eighth graders were moving chairs and desks and so forth, to make sure we had enough seats and places for the kids to go. And all in all, it worked out very well, so I would also like to, as Cindy has acknowledged everybody who's had a part in making this work, and tomorrow, we will be doing the exact same thing and get the kids there and get the, I should mention, the lunch trays was, what I thought was priceless when they were trying to, the little kids trying to carry their lunch trays back to the big kid tables and so forth. Mr. Delaney was good enough to set up the atrium exclusively for the first graders. They had the atrium to themselves, so we thank him for that as well. A lot of, a lot of help getting this done, and I think it speaks volume about the people in the Douglas School community, and everybody helping out, so.
Yes, we just need to hide the Cheetos at the lunch counter, because the little ones saw the bags of Cheetos or the potato chips, and they wanted those.
And why wouldn't they?
Wouldn't it be expensive to get, like, wall units for the, even the cafeteria down at the primaries? Have we ever looked into?
So, we did do a little bit of investigation, and it was.
$20,000?
Price prohibitive, for the most part. But I, if, while we're at it, we might as well talk about the fact that really, it's something that we probably should look at as a committee. What can we do to offset these types of concerns with the weather? Because it's going to happen again in May and June as well. It could still happen in late September and early October. You get, you get really hot days. We had talked about, you know, they've got three sort of large common areas that you could, you could convert them into some classroom space on these hot days. So, the cafeteria, which, you know, even though they've got two huge fans in there, it's still really, really hot. But you could, if you could look to air-condition or come up with a plan to air-condition the cafeteria, the gym, and the library, you could probably move a lot of the classes and accommodate them, rather than trying to air-condition every single classroom. And it would be, you know, a stop-gap measure, but it would certainly, it's something that we should probably be thinking about, because that building is an important building. That building needs to stay a viable building for the school district, and I think that there's plenty of other things to talk about with regards to that building, but this is the one that seems to have the greatest impact on our students, is, it just becomes, it holds the heat. And really, it's been, it's the humidity that's been, that's been really, really difficult. So, your point is well-taken, and we should really be thinking about and looking into that, and maybe doing a deeper dive into what is the real cost to do some of these, some of these rooms.
Yeah, I would say, even if it's outfitting certain rooms or parts of the building for temporary air-conditioning situations, you know, to, you know, completely wire the thing for central AC is, you know, I imagine that's just a mammoth, but.
So, the good thing with that would allow you to, if you wanted to go to your classroom, you could go to, in other words, leave the classroom, go to the library for a period of time, then go back to the classroom, not spend the entire day in the humid rooms that exist. And that's just not, that's just not going to change, no matter what we try to do. If you were to go in there, there's probably a dozen and a half fans blowing in different locations, trying to cool it down as best we can. But by 11 o'clock, I mean, the sun just pounds the back of the building. All those classrooms just gets hammered with sun all day long.
I'm pretty sure they, you know, they have these massive mobile AC units that if you had the right, you know, fitting in a wall someplace, you'd be able to hook up a couple of those, you know, on a temporary basis.
We did some investigating with that, and, you know, one of the things was that you need to hire an electrician to bring in new breakers and so forth, so there's some work to do with it. So, we did look into it, but I do think that it is definitely something we need to look into going forwards to just be able to respond to it more effectively. It just makes the building more viable as well, especially in the hot weather.
We actually, just a little bit more on that. So, we actually do have an electrician coming to actually look to see, because if we can just take care of the electrical component first, whether it's a mobile or a rental or a mobile units or whatever, at least look at that. The, like you said, as far as having air-conditioning, like full-fledged air-conditioning in the building, that's so cost prohibitive.
Yeah.
But the other two are reasonable things that we can do. So, the electrical part, we're going to, I'm waiting to see what the cost is going to be. We'll probably just do that anyway.
Yeah.
That way, we're ready, so whichever other option we have, we can just move forward with it.
Just makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen. Who came in? I resemble everybody.
Stooges.
Stooges, yep. Stooges, yep. Let's let the new guy go first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, John.
All right, so at Douglas Elementary School, we started the year with three-hundred-and-fifty-six students. Third grade is our largest grade. We have a hundred-four students in third grade. The rest of them are right around eighty, so that's just our our large group. And we have about twenty-seven kids in that, those classes. And in the other classes, it's nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. We had several new positions added to our school this year. So we had our new full-time adjustment counselor, which has already been a wonderful addition. Ms. Blessing has been all over our building, meeting with kids, doing small groups, and so it's been nice. I wasn't here last year to see what it looked like part-time, but I can imagine that she was spread pretty thin. And so having a full-time person there already meeting the needs of our kids has been great. We also added another full-time special education teacher this year. And so we're still working out what those schedules look like and getting into the routines. But it's been nice seeing our two inclusion teachers in classrooms co-teaching with their gen ed teachers. I think last year, from what I was hearing, there was lots of, you know, as situations arose, they weren't able to be in those inclusion classrooms because they were doing other things. This extra teacher has really made it so that they're able to do what they're supposed to do, and she's taken a lot of the load off of what they were doing. So that's been nice. This week, our adjustment counselor, Ms. Blessing, Mr. Aronian and I are going to go visit each grade level. And just with me being new and Ms. Blessing being new, and Mr. Aronian was only there last year, we're going to go meet with each grade and just talk about what our roles are in the in the building, let the kids get to know us a little bit, just so they kind of know, put a name with a face and all that. So as we go through the year, they know who's who's interacting with them. So we're looking forward to doing that tomorrow and on Friday. And then it's been an interesting couple of days with the the AC issues. You know, at the elementary school, we had our AC go down. And we've had the primary kids over there with us. But it's been, we haven't had a regular day yet, but it's been a lot of fun, too. And it's been, you know, I think the teachers noticed the stress. But as she'll walk around and see the kids, they all have smiles on their faces, they don't know anything different. So it's been a fun start to the school year and it seems like the kids are loving it. My primary goal right now is to get to know all the students' names. I'm I'm working on it and every day, like if I get one right, I feel really proud of myself. So my goal is to get that as quick as possible, but it's going to take a little bit of time. And then also I want to be in the classrooms and see what's what's happening, what our instruction looks like, and then analyze our data. I was talking to Mr. Mainz and Ms. Urquhart today about some of our data and just kind of some next steps for how we're going to attack that and make some improvements. So it's been it's been a fun start to the year and I'm looking forward to going on.
So if I can say that the new guy has settled in very nicely. He's been very, he's been very busy, but also very willing to help out and becoming part of the team really quickly because he had to, because we were we were going to, we were using his building whether he wanted us to or not. But but he had the rooms all set up and him and Matt were well-prepared and really smoothly. He's been out in the hot sun with me, walking the kids up and up and down, just like Brian has been as well. And it has really been hot. It really has been hot and humid, so.
Your AC is fixed now?
It is.
Yes.
We have a few more issues this afternoon, but I think they repaired it again, so.
Unfortunately, that has been an ongoing issue since they built the building, as Scannaro was lamenting over the weekend with me on. It has been an ongoing battle that and the the entryway to the building. Still continue to be problematic, so. But John's done a nice job settling in. The middle school, Mr. Delaney.
At middle school, we started the year with an enrollment of three-hundred-and-twenty-six, which is a reduction by sixteen from last year's start at three-hundred-and-forty-two. We have one-hundred students in grade eight. We have one-hundred-and-twenty-three students in grade seven. And we have a hundred-and-five students in grade six. So we have four teachers in grade six. We have four homerooms and core teachers. We have five teachers in grade seven. We moved a sixth-grade teacher, Mrs. Ford, to support the one-hundred-and-twenty-five students in grade seven. And she will be, again, serving the role as a writing teacher to assist in ELA. I'll speak about that a little bit, the successes we've seen around that. And then we also, again, continue to have five teachers in grade eight. As again, we said, we have one open paraprofessional position, which I had hoped to have filled by today, and my top candidate went another direction. So again, we'll speak about some of the challenges we have finding paras, but the ones we have, we're very proud of and doing a doing a great job. We do have a new schedule this year. I did put out a letter to all parents. So proud that I got my my summer letter out before August. I sent it out on July thirty-first. But it is a rotating schedule. It's a six-day schedule with six classes a day. And it is also featuring, I'm very proud to say, three full-time related arts teachers, which is considerably different from the past years where all our related arts teachers were point-five. And as you've heard me discuss in the past, and it's been part of my school improvement plan, that it was constraining to our schedule and there were other topics that I really felt our students needed to have exposure to, to be twenty-first-century learners. And also, I believe, a full-time teacher is more effective than a part-time teacher. And we've already seen great value in that, to build community and for teachers to make connections with kids and to really get the best out of the teachers we have. So it is good news, bad news. We have three teachers teaching seven different topic areas. So again, the the good news is they're that talented. The bad news is we wish we had more of them, but we we make do with with what we have. So they're really doing a great job. Part of that, Mr. Pacheco says, he reported this morning, that we have fifty-five members of chorus. That's up from forty-one from last year. And we currently have thirty band members. That's up from twenty-two from last year. So again, incremental growth. Speaking of incremental growth, we're also very pleased with last year's part of the school improvement plan. We talked about the focus on empowering writers and improving writing and literacy in the middle school. The early results from MCAS show that there has been a marked improvement in all grades six, seven, and eight in ELA, which we're we're very proud of and I'm sure we'll be reporting out in future meetings, but.
Has the embargo is lifted, right?
In the ELA department in all three grades, I'm extraordinarily proud of our teachers and even more proud of our students. They rose to the challenge and the changes that we invested in and have made proven to be valid and successful. And our goal this year is just to continue to build on that, just continue to. They far exceeded my expectations of of growth, so I couldn't ask for more. But everybody has really done a phenomenal job. We have, again, one of the things that we're setting up for next year as we continue to work on literacy, we will be setting up next year a focus on STEM, a re-engagement of STEM. Because of budget issues in the past, that was something that suffered. So we are developing this year the early steps to re-engage science, technology, engineering, and math. Eighth grade has a STEM, mainly math-focused, field trip to Gillette Stadium on Friday, September fourteenth. That will be followed up by a STEM field trip to Medtronic in Mansfield on October eleventh. Medtronic is a global device manufacturer with global sales of fifty billion and fifty thousand employees. Their women's leadership group has tried to focus on student outreach and engaging students in careers in science, technology, engineering, math. We're going to be taking forty students from the seventh and eighth grade. It is a competitive application process, but we'll be taking them to Medtronic. Mrs. Graveson Payne and I, who this summer have met with the executives at Medtronic, and they've got a really wonderful day in store for us. They have a team of twelve people dedicated to to creating this relationship with Douglas that will include things like virtual reality, implementation, augmented reality, real-time analytics, that students will see how the use of science, engineering, and math saves people's lives, right? And how, what a what a career looks like in that. So we're excited about that. Cross-country is off and running. We will be talking later this evening about the.
Great choice of words, sir, that was awesome. Great choice of words, sir.
Up and running, of course. Up and running.
I got that myself.
All right, so. Ah cha cha. So they do. So we're again, off off and to a good start. And that is a report from middle school. Thank you, Mr..
Dear.
Oh.
Did you want to talk about deer?
Yes, dear. So again, part of our our continued literacy program and the change in the schedule, where in the past we had Wynn, which was the last thirty minutes of every day, was for what, whatever is needed or whatever is necessary. And I always liked Wynn, but it was having various varying degrees of success and it was it was very loosely defined. And one of the things that I wanted to continue to build on our success of literacy is engage students in great reading, a love of reading. But as long as students have one of these accessible in their hand or an Xbox or Playstation at home, they're not going to read at the level that we need them to do deep reading and foster a love of reading, just out of sheer distraction. And so we've created a thirty-minute block across our six-day schedule for seven and eight. There's three consecutive days in a block, and for grade six, it's two. They are keeping two days of Wynn. And then the other three days for seven and eight are focused on math. So that is getting the students to have focused, silent, attentive, productive work in a silent environment thirty minutes a day. The stuff that may or may not get done at home, we can assure will get done in school in a in a quiet, focused, silent area where you're beginning to math, they can they can do that drill and we can check to see if they get it or not before they go home. Or it can at least be done, you know, in school and we can have that that mechanism to help rather than to fight around the kitchen island or table, you know. We're just looking for for better production. If we're going to spend the time, let's make it good time. So again, we wanted to focus on the literacy, but we also wanted to continue to to build on our math, math needs as well. So that's, it's, right now, it's it's paper-based. We want to make sure we do have something called Apple Classroom, that if the kids do have digital content, we can lock that at the teacher level. It is set up and we ran out of time at our teacher orientation last Monday, but it's on every kid's iPad and the teacher has the ability, when they open up digital content, something like the Liberty application. I've been in touch with Justin Snook at the Douglas Public Library, and we are trying to get every kid to have a Douglas Public Library card so that they can use the online app and download online books that they can read in class and not be able to swipe anywhere else. The teacher can lock their iPad and then they can just focus on that digital content. For now, it's paper-only, just for, this is, we're still in the proof-of-concept phase. But also, again, we want it silent, we want it focused. We want to take away all distractions and just get some good reading done. So we we really expect good results and we'll monitor it closely. And if it needs adjusting and adapting, we'll we'll do that accordingly.
Just a couple of things along that line is that, as you know, I don't remember, Cindy, if you remember, when Empowering Writers, we started with that. It's been five years, maybe? Five or six years. So I think we're seeing the benefits of that. I know that the middle school has been very focused on on the writing piece of it. And as you know, district-wide, we have been talking about the the whole focus on literacy and now the the more critical reading and the types of reading that we're engaging the kids in is is an important piece. So the middle school is doing that as well, which I think is a great thing. Linking them together is going to, is also going to pay us some wonderful dividends. And I think we'll see continued growth in the ELA scores along along that because of our focus on it, so.
I have a question.
Yep.
Two questions. I thought you were actually just going to answer this about electronic devices. I know that they traditionally use iPads. We used to send them home. What's your policy going forward this year with the iPads?
We're still going to keep the iPads, what I call, in the stable. It is a depreciable asset and it is a machine and the wear and tear on it, they were breaking down. So we 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 went to the keep them in the school policy last year and we saw a enormous reduction in breakage, an enormous reduction in loss of productivity from students not having them charged when they came in. So we are extending the resource by protecting it, by by keeping it at home and that the teachers have adjusted and adapted what they expect to be done online based on on assigning work that the kids have assured can be accessed through whatever device. And I can assure you, there isn't anything they can't do that that can't be done on this. This is, this is their computer now. And so our going on, they're they're over four years old now. They lose battery quickly, the screens are brittle. We do not have the money to replace the ones that break, so we're we're protecting that asset. And it's, again, proven to be the best decision. It's, it's not, I would prefer they go home, I would prefer that they have that, but we we have to protect that resource and keeping them within the school has proven to be the the best way to go at this time.
Second question, schedules. For like the sixth graders, for example, is that just based on the fact that you're just doing benchmarking? Like, why is it taking?
So the, every student has a schedule. And the teachers will work with the kids to make sure that they're in their best grouping. But you can come to the front office, any parent come to the front office and ask to see their kid's schedule. Every kid has a schedule. So the the teachers are doing their benchmarks to make sure that everyone is appropriately placed. So every student has a schedule, every student has a place to be at the given time. Teachers have that flexibility to make sure that we're servicing the the students in the proper manner. If there's any questions, you please call me directly and I can talk about that further.
I was just more asking, like, in general, like, are the, like, I know, like, my daughters had a schedule, like, for the eighth grade, and I was just wondering, like, the sixth graders, that's, that's, I think I heard that it was coming out tomorrow, but I was just curious as to, like, why.
I, on record, every sixth grader.
They already had a schedule.
Start of school has had.
There's adjustments made, but they had a schedule.
Because of their need to do benchmarks early and they want to make sure everybody is placed appropriately, they're holding off on distributing those.
Moving kids around.
So because they're with the flexibility to be able to move kids around. But I can say under the eyes of God and before this committee.
Okay, fair enough.
Every student, every sixth grader has and has had, since the start of school, a fixed schedule, so.
But it has not been given to them necessarily until tomorrow? Is that, it's not being published to them till tomorrow? Is that?
If they're ready to publish them tomorrow, that's great.
Okay.
That's great. That's, that's, that's what I want.
Okay.
But I also want to make sure that we do it right, rather than speedy. You know, and every teacher gives their own benchmarks. And again, we're just, we're dialing this in. I have spoken to the the sixth-grade class twice and said, we do appreciate your patience on this and even in college.
What's the reasoning for that?
I'm sorry?
What's the reasoning for them not having them on day one? The benchmarking?
Correct, correct, so.
You don't go by fifth grade going to sixth grade?
I wasn't actually aware that the teachers had that. I didn't, but I, turns out, they, rather than causing greater confusion, they opted to.
That's something different, though, isn't it?
They're usually, they usually pick the classes.
Yeah.
The year before in the spring, and we simply ran out of time last year. It was extraordinarily busy spring and we just weren't able to get that done. And so we backed up a little bit. But I would like to say again, every student was scheduled. Every student has a schedule.
And there are modifications.
It's just going to be subject to modifications.
Subject to modification.
Every schedule is subject to modification. That happens at the high school all the time. I mean, kids change schedules.
I I described a little bit, I showed in the future by saying, in college, you will have a week of something called drop ad. So even in the real world, in the upper echelons of education, this is something normal. Do I wish it was done earlier? And will it be done earlier next year? Absolutely. I've actually set a goal that this, all of this rigmarole will be done by May thirtieth. So that's.
So part of the answer to that question is to follow a similar format that we used at the high school, which is students will go in and advance the year before, request their classes. Then I-Pass will schedule the the students and then you can go in and make adjustments to it from from there as well. And and hopefully, we can, we can bring that down, all the way down to the different grade levels. The issue of the fifth grade is in 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 the documents that came up. We spent some time really reviewing the documents and we think that we'd like to make some tweaks to that that process. I'll just, I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the time.
Mr. Romano, how's everything at the high school?
Things have been very smooth at the high school so far. We have three-hundred-and-ninety-seven students, that's slightly up. We were around three-ninety just before the seniors left us in the spring, so we're up a little bit. We have our six new new teachers, well, five plus one new long-term sub from Maggie Brennick. And it was ten new paraprofessionals. I was counting Annie DeWitt, who moved from paraprofessional role to a. An ABA role. But I actually hired thirteen over the course of the summer because I had three that left before, that quit before the school year began to take better-paying jobs, which was not very challenging for them to find better-paying jobs. But but we persevered and I am full. And we have, I think we have some great people going. They're very young. The the oldest pair that we hired, I think, is thirty, and she actually looks like a high school kid, so. The new staff, they're they're already kind of fitting in last week. Mr. Vega led them in a, the new staff in a. Last week, Mr. Vega led them in a, the new staff, in a review of our fire and lockdown procedures, which was very fortunately timed, because the next morning, the fire chief showed up and we had our fire drill, and we looked great, though. Things, it went really smoothly because of that. A lot of credit to Desi for taking them through that. And we had our first faculty meeting yesterday. So we started with a review of some basic first aid, the EpiPens, what to do if a student has a seizure. I went over an orientation to Atlas, which is the software we use for recording our curriculum. One of our goals is to have all of our curriculum recorded in Atlas and up-to-date by the end of the year. I went into some preliminary data. Most of it I can't share with you yet, it's pretty good. The one item of data that I can share with you is one hundred and ten million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred seconds, which is the amount of time that Lynn Gaskell spent in Douglas High School over her twenty-four years here. She also could have cooked six thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two twenty-pound turkeys over that time. So we did a little, a little bit of food for her for that, while the staff worked on another thing that I like to do, where I have the staff identify things that they want to get done this year, things that they want to get done the next couple of years, and things to get done over the next five years. And they kind of feed that into the school improvement plan, and then also, like, they kind of pick the things that are bothering them, and then Desi and I fix them that year, and so we all feel like we've really accomplished something. They also pick out the things that, what they think that we do well now, and that everybody feels good when they get to do that kind of stuff. We piloted a new peer mentoring program to help with freshman transition. I had seven students who volunteered to be mentors. We linked them up with seven freshmen, Ms. Poole and the new adjustment counselor, and Ms. O'Brien, the new high school guidance counselor that I stole from Mr. Delaney. They helped me out with that. It really was, it really was cute. It really was, was, right away, the mix between the kids, I thought, was great. We're also, we also started academic tutoring and academic intervention for non-special ed students. That one's been a little bit rougher starting, but we've got it in place now, and Ms. Mallow, the new librarian, is supervising that, so now we're in the process of hooking up juniors and seniors to do some of that tutoring with kids, and she's reaching out to teachers to support what they're doing in classes. Mr. Lashapal has the robotics lab up and running. We're also piloting co-teaching. So far, the feedback I've gotten has been pretty positive, and all staff will be participating in co-teaching training over the course of the year. Fall sports have started. The schedules are on the school website, and I also put them in my blog, which I publish most Fridays. Back-to-school night is September thirteenth at six-thirty. Yours is as well, right?
Correct.
What time is yours?
Six o'clock to seven-thirty.
His is six o'clock, mine's at six-thirty, so you can go and listen to him, and then you come and listen to me, and then you can go around and meet the teachers. And then we have our NEASC accreditation visit is October fourteenth. I did the final review on the report today. Tomorrow, Ms. Fitz will click the send or check or whatever box, and it will be sent to our visiting team, and they will be here in a few weeks.
Great.
Good.
Sounds good.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so the last thing that's under the superintendent's report is something we have discussed on a number of occasions, and that is the paraprofessional pay rate. What we would like to ask is for the committee to consider and review a proposal to look to adjust the salary rates for our paraprofessional staff. Looking at a two-year phase-in type of plan, present rates range anywhere from just above eleven dollars an hour to just under fifteen dollars an hour. It's been, we have some paraprofessionals who are, not only are they bachelor-degreed, we have some that are master's-degreed that are working for us right now. The other issue that Ms. Keegan brought up is that we have a program that has a, only three steps to it, and maybe something to consider is to maybe increase the numbers of steps to support a little bit of a better salary schedule for them. What you heard from the principals is that it's happened, I can't tell you how many times, is that we bring somebody in, they're a great interview, we sell what we're doing here, they're on board, and then we say, and the pay rate is eleven thirty-nine an hour, and out the door they go. We're just not competitive, and it's something that I know that Nancy Lane talked about probably seven years ago, and over the time, we have not been able to address it because of the budgetary constraints. But each year we get further along, the salary hasn't changed, and it really does need to have the committee take a real good, hard look at it and see if there's a plan that could allow us to adjust those salaries to what we consider a more appropriate dollar amount, and then phase it in over the course of the next couple of years, while also looking at possibly adding some additional steps along the way as well. Anything you want to share?
So I did do some analysis, and as far as all the paraprofessionals that we currently have in the district. And I also did reach out to all of the area towns. I actually did this last year, because we were trying to do this last year, as you recall, but we couldn't do it then either. So the rates, our rates are far lower than what you see anywhere else. For instance, in Milbury, and again, this is for FY eighteen, non-degree range is from three, thirteen dollars and eight cents to fifteen fifty-nine, and they have seven steps. That's non-degree. Compared to ours is eleven dollars and eighty cents to thirteen thirty. And theirs, again, goes up to fifteen fifty-nine, so there's a difference there. Degree goes from eighteen oh eight to twenty sixty, again, seven steps. Our degree goes from thirteen thirty to fourteen seventy-four, there's a huge difference there, huge difference there. Uxbridge was, they actually don't have rates, they actually have salaries. So they're, just for comparative purposes, their non-degree comparison, their top step is twenty-six thousand, five seventeen. If I were to equalize it out, seven hours per day, one hundred and eighty-three days, it comes to eighteen thousand, seven sixty-four, huge difference again. Hope Dale, they have three different levels, ten steps. So it is kind of hard in some cases to compare, because there are different types of situations. But their rates go, just the gamut, they only have three steps as well, but it goes from fourteen eighty-six to seventeen ninety-three for the first, and twelve fifty-four to fifteen thirty-seven, eleven eighty-seven to fourteen fifty-eight. So again, there's a difference there, not as much depending on which level you're looking at. Grafton, fourteen sixteen to sixteen twenty-one, and they have sixteen, they have sixteen, six steps, sorry about that. So a couple of, up to a couple of dollars difference there. Bellingham, first six months, they start off at twelve forty-five, then they go to sixteen after six months, and then after a year, it goes from there. So they're all more than what we have here. And again, those are from FY, either FY seventeen or eighteen, because some of them were still in negotiations or didn't have the rates for eighteen when I did seek this information here.
Would you happen to know if, so this is last year's information? Offhand, any of those districts paras in the union or non-union?
Um, okay, let's see if I actually even have that. Because as you know, ours is non-union.
Right.
Yeah, I think Bellingham is a union.
Milbury, it doesn't appear to be. See, Uxbridge, definitely. And theirs is more complicated and has some other issues associated with it. Grafton, no. Actually, I didn't ask that question, I was just looking for the rates at the time. But the only one that I know for sure is-
I know Milbury is not.
No, I'm not sure about that. Yeah, so the only one I'm sure about is Uxbridge. I can ask that as well.
I'm fairly confident that Bellingham is, and I believe Hope Dale is as well.
Now, those numbers that you just gave us, the eleven dollars an hour, I can see from here, it looks like that's from two thousand and thirteen. Is that correct? That goes back to then, before, like, the minimum wage increase? Just out of curiosity.
Oh, this particular sheet here, just, I just happened to have that it goes back to two thousand and thirteen.
Yeah, you go from two thousand and thirteen all the way up to two thousand and nineteen.
Because, I mean, even next year, we're going to have a minimum wage increase as well, up to twelve dollars. So, I mean, I think that that probably was not keeping up with the minimum wage increases.
Yeah, we're not, no, don't take this the wrong, we're not-
Obligated to do that.
Really, we're not. But obviously, from a competitive-
Right, exactly. That's where I'm coming from.
-point, that's a different, different story.
With the level of responsibility that lays on these people daily, you can go flip burgers at McDonald's with no stress for the same money, and that's pretty sad.
So to give you just somewhat of an idea, now, the way that I've seen this typically handled when you do these things is you don't do a percentage increase. Percentage increase is typically for a cola. If you're doing an adjustment, it's usually a dollar amount to whatever the rates are. And so I just kind of just picked, just to see, to gauge. So if we were to add a dollar to each rate, and I did every single individual person that we had at that time, we may have had a couple more hires, but, I mean, it's going to change and shift, as you know, it would be sixty-one thousand, six oh five, so around sixty-one, sixty-two thousand, just to add a dollar onto each rate, paras, both degree and non-degree.
Again, only for paras, not ABAs.
Yeah, just for the paras, yeah. And if it were a dollar fifty, it would be ninety-two thousand, four oh seven fifty, so around, say, ninety-three thousand.
So it might be-
We have a lot of paras in the district.
It might be a good idea to get the subcommittee together this week, or next week, I mean, it's not this week, next week, so that we can put together proposals to bring to the committee for the following meeting, and we're looking, we would probably be looking for immediate implementation as well.
Now, the only funding source that we, as you know, that we have available at this time is school choice. Doesn't mean that by the end of the year, it might end up basically reverting back to the general fund, depending on, you know, the, how the year goes. But in then, of course, we need to look prospectively, and then we need to be thinking about, while we're preparing our FY twenty budget, can we incorporate something in if we're going to do either additional steps and/or another, another adjustment, too. In other words, do it over a couple of years, and then looking at steps. But of course, we have to look prospectively, we have to look at sustainability. And I'm also working on, I had mentioned this to Brett last week, I'm working on FY twenty, just kind of a thirty thousand, you know, view, you know, just very broad, just basically taking this year's appropriation and adding the percent that was during discussions that the Board of Selectmen had put out there, what they initially said that they were going to provide to us. And then I was going to actually take all of the salaries, kind of look at all the negotiations that we have, and basically see what that delta is, just as very, very broad brush, but we need to have something there in order for us to have some discussion.
And assuming nothing else changes from this point, this, you know-
Right, exactly, right. Otherwise, we really can't have any meaningful discussions about looking prospectively or sustainability without my doing that work. Doesn't mean, of course, I always put it at the bottom for discussion purposes only, and, you know, but we have to have something like that, so I've been working on that as well.
Yeah. I had a very brief conversation with the town administrator over the summer about that, you know, and, you know, it comes to talk to him, he's looking forward to that conversation.
We're hoping in October that at least, you know, Kevin and I and the finance director and the town administrator can get together, as we have in the past with the previous town administrator. I'm sure they're amiable to that, I don't have any reason to think otherwise. And just to give both of us time to settle in, both on the town side and on our, you know, just opening up schools, so we're thinking October we would be doing that.
So my perspective on it is that, I think, to address the immediate issue and then to continue to look at where we're going beyond this first year, is it more steps? And really sit down with the subcommittee and really look at coming up with a good plan that addresses the issue. I don't think, unless you're in a school district, not very many people understand the magnitude of the job that paraprofessionals does. They're not appreciated by the public as they should be, and the work that they do is challenging, it is valuable, and it needs to be seen that way and paid that way.
I'm sorry, when did you say the last pay increase was?
I can't, I've been here ten years, I don't remember them ever getting-
Actually, there's never been an adjustment as far back as I, because I actually hide a lot of these columns, there's no room on the sheet, but it's been, right, exactly, it's just been the column.
The column is along.
You know, and it was, right, they came up with the rates, it was many, many, many years ago.
I don't recall ever, I think the only thing we ever raised was substitute salaries in all the years that I've been here.
That's not fair. We really need to.
Yeah, this is like a really, a drive for me, that I really need to see this happen. And aside from, you know, even a financial increase, you know, I think that at this point, they have one personal day a year. I think that we need to revisit that.
So that's the bigger picture that we were, I was just mentioning, the things that we want to really look at going down the road to try to address it. As I think we mentioned, we talked about, we're coming up with a handbook, we're coming up with job descriptions, evaluation forms, and want to meet with-
Even reviews.
All of that.
A much bigger perspective on the job of the paraprofessional, and, but your point is well-taken, that, you know, teachers get four, but parap gets one day.
Right. Yeah, so they are working on the revision of the, well, it was formally called the benefits manual, which really isn't an appropriate thing to call it, so I'm not, I'm calling it employee manual, but we, I have started working on that, and again, we will be looking at, like, every single page, everything in there, looking prospectively, because these are documents that you don't prepare, you don't change every year.
Right.
You need to think prospectively. And, you know, there are issues of equity and fairness that need to be addressed.
So it's my understanding that you're looking to do something-
Right away.
Soon, right away, and then-
Absolutely.
Do some things to change it in the-
In all honesty, and I understand the perspective of the district and where we've been and so forth, but this is, it's unconscionable to go any further.
Yeah, no, you just can't, yeah.
So. So that was everything in the superintendent's report, so thank you very much.
So, school committee and subcommittee reports, council panel report, I don't know if you want this.
I'll just read off.
We already got your own.
I signed twelve batches totaling three oh eight, eight eighty-eight and eighty cents.
Yeah.
It was nothing, it was end-of-the-year bills, a few new ones, stuff from the summer, nothing too exciting. I'm afraid, but there were lots of them.
Beginning of the year is always very busy.
Yes, that's, and then we move on to our consent agenda. So, forty fifteen minutes?
I believe the minutes were not processed.
I'll have the minutes.
We're going to defer that to our next meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
DMS, middle school out-of-state cross-country meet.
Mr. Delaney has some information for us with regards to a cross-country meet. Brian, do you know the number of participants?
Right now, we are at fifteen. We hope to have four more members of the cross-country squad by Friday. So we have had a number of students go to the high school for both cross-country and soccer.
Yeah.
Pretty draining, but we're going to put out a shout-out for some other representatives for the school to be part of that team, so it's-
Well, the high school students are doing the same thing right now as well, so. Before you go, Brian, I'm sorry, before you start, can anybody, I don't remember, I've been here ten years, I don't remember ever having a class in the eighth grade of only a hundred students. That seems-
Wait till you see what it's going to be like in ninth grade.
Well, that's, you'll lose some from Blackstone Valley in private schools. That's what I'm saying, it's usually been, I can't remember it being less than like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty?
I was going to say, the graduating class of two thousand and eighteen was at a hundred and five when they were in eighth grade.
Okay, so that was a smaller one.
Wait, say that again.
The class of two thousand and eighteen, when they were in eighth grade, was at about a hundred and five.
Yeah, so it's kind of, I always remember them being in the one thirties, one forties, over the ten years that I've been here. I was just, I was just, I meant to say it when you said something and I forgot to say it, but I was surprised that you were only at a hundred students in grade eight, and-
Nineteen kids in a classroom. Something like that, right?
I'm sorry?
About nineteen kids in a classroom?
Yeah, in the above twenties, something like that, yeah.
That's great.
All right, I interrupted, I'm sorry, Brian.
Just very quickly, the two thousand and eighteen Ocean State Cross-Country Invitational, which is a race that Douglas Middle School has attended for a number of years, will be held on Friday, September twenty-first. The middle school race is between three forty-five and six-thirty in the afternoon. Teams from Rhode Island, Massachusetts, and Connecticut compete, so it just always raises the level of competition by exposing them to many other runners across many other states. It is held at North Kingston High School in North Kingston, Rhode Island. And again, we, at this time, will be taking fifteen runners out of state for an entry And again, we, at this time, will be taking fifteen runners out of state for an entry fee of a hundred and twenty dollars for both boys' and girls' race, so sixty dollars for each. So we're asking for permission to take the team again out of state on the twenty-first of September.
We've been, this has been seven or eight years we've been doing this, maybe even more?
Any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions? Any questions down there?
Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Great.
I know, I've been there, I've been there many, many years.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the middle school out-of-state cross-country meet to North Kingston, Rhode Island on Friday, September twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Motion by Jillian.
Second.
Second by Julie.
I don't, they don't have a rain date with it.
They run in the rain.
They run in the rain, yeah.
Been there for those too, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same. Thank you.
Please tell them to run wicked fast.
Absolutely.
Okay, next we have Douglas High School out-of-state cross-country meet.
Josh will be up there for a while, he's not coming back for a little bit.
Just going to get a name plaque up here.
All right, so the high school will be participating in the same event in Warwick, Rhode Island on Saturday, September twenty-second. We, right now, it's twelve students, although Mr. Thayer is heavily recruiting to get up to fourteen, that would give him qual-, well, two qualifying teams. He needs thirteen for two qualifying teams, actually. So we're looking for permission to bring our students to the Ocean State Cross Country Meet on September twenty-second. Mary did ask me to ask for a, if there is some sort of disaster and it's postponed, so a date to be determined as well.
I don't think this has ever happened, but if, if it should have a rainout or a snowbath or- Sinkholes. They're running.
Guaranteed.
They're going to run, but if, if, if not on the designated alternative date.
We need a motion?
Any questions?
Yeah, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the high school out-of-state cross-country meet to Warwick, Rhode Island on Saturday, September twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. And what's the language for a, to be determined date?
Alternative date.
Alternative date.
Alternative date to be determined.
To be determined.
Motion from Jillian, or a second?
Second.
Second from Kelly, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, you don't have the golf one on there?
Yeah, the golf, the golf document didn't make it into the packet, so if you could share with us the situation there.
Yes, so the golf team plays, I think, every year against Barlett, and Barlett plays their golf matches in Thompson, Connecticut. So it's to seek permission for the golf team to go to Thompson, Connecticut for a match on September eighteenth, and on an alternative date to be determined as needed.
What's the date?
September eighteenth. And a TBD.
Is, is Barlett a frequent player? I don't, this might be one of the-
First times.
First time we've played them, yeah.
This is your first?
Yeah.
I didn't remember asking for this one last year, but at that point, last, this point last year, I was a little bit in sort of like, we're John's-
I was a little, I was a little confused, I thought maybe Kevin had scheduled a match with the team from Connecticut, which couldn't be so close to him, but-
No, it's a mass team that they play in, Thompson, Connecticut.
So it's the eighteenth?
It is the eighteenth.
At Thompson Country Club.
And also an alternative date to be determined, because they will not play in Lightning.
Okay, I'm ready. I'll make a motion to approve the high school golf team meet to, in Thompson, Connecticut on September eighteenth, and an alternative date.
To be determined. Motion from Jillian, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Lisa, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, abstained, none, unanimous, thank you.
We're going to table the foreign language trip.
Yep, we're going to table that for two weeks.
Good.
Okay.
So now we're with you for the, for the point two FTE Spanish that slipped through the cracks.
Yes, so we, part of, of what we added with the override was we expanded our point eight position into a, we had a point eight Spanish position, we expanded that to a one-point-oh, and we never put it, as all, everything was coming through, we never put it on the docket for approval. So the position is, I guess it's technically Alicia Leclerc, who is our newest Spanish teacher that just started. But she, this would bring her to five sections, the same as everybody else, and it would help us to, it'll, it'll help us to ensure that we're, we're providing enough sections for everybody to get their foreign language requirements met.
So I move that we approve the point two FTE increase for the Douglas High School Spanish teacher to a one-point-oh FTE.
The increase of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I was making it up.
Move to increase of a point two FTE to the Douglas High School Spanish teacher, bringing the position to a one-point-oh FTE. The increase of fifteen thousand four hundred and eighteen will be funded by the general fund.
Okay.
Motion from Julie, second from Jillian, so we have room in the general fund budget already without anything?
Yeah, from vacancy savings, yeah, from people coming and going.
We actually budgeted for it when we projected everything, we just never actually did the technical increase in the position.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Seeing none, approved, thank you.
Before we go on from there, now going back to the conversation recently of expanding the requirement and implementing the requirement, my, my guess is that we will probably need to, in order to accommodate the additional students who may not be taking a Spanish going forward, we might be looking at increasing this from three full-time teachers to three, maybe three-four, three-point-four. Because you're going to now, any of those students who may not have been taking it, unless they are exempted, would be taking a Spanish class. We will need some additional teaching sessions, I would think, for next year. I just want to put that out there so the committee is aware of that, that there's a very strong likelihood that that will be the case. That it might be a need for a couple of additional sections in order to meet the needs of all the students who are participating, with us having now mandated that they take the requirement. Okay.
Can we do French at all, or no?
I would love to, but the students kind of voted with their feet.
Yeah.
The, the French enrollment numbers were down so low.
It just continued year after year, after year, unfortunately.
I've, I've talked to the staff about, you know, is there another language that we'd maybe like to see about adding? And I know like American Sign Language has become like a popular thing to incorporate, people always talk Mandarin and things like that, but, yeah, we'll kind of see where the trend's going and see what the students kind of want to take.
That's interesting, you could do American Sign Language as like actual, that would-
Yeah, a lot of colleges will now count it as a requirement. My daughter took this.
Give it to a kid.
Next up, we have, oop.
I'm going to grab it.
Okay.
I get it, I get it.
So we have district-wide safety buckets and doorstops.
So one of the things that obviously we have been having some great discussions about, and we've been looking at in changing our safety plan, one of the things that we had talked about is that the, the strong emphasis on ensuring that each classroom is supplied, should we ever get into a lockdown situation, that could be an extended lockdown situation. There is the, you can purchase these pre-made kits, which have a wide variety of things in them. More importantly, it, it, it's not all-inclusive, but it is pretty thorough and pretty complete. Are you going to be able to put that all back in, you think?
I'm not going to go too far, because I know Desi had to play some Tetris to get it all back together today.
Yeah.
But so the buck, the, what the bucket contains, it does have, there's some emergency food and water. There is a tarp, there is, these are dust masks, flashlight, toilet paper, safety vest, and the bucket itself
Toilet.
Is a toilet.
Oh my god.
And then we, what we looked at is, this starts as the basic foundation, and then each school can kind of tailor to the other things that they might need. So for example, like Desi and I were looking at perhaps some chem lights to put in there, because just one flashlight, if you're in there for a while, it's, it's maybe nicer to have some other sources of light. And then also putting a, usually called emergency hammers or a glass-breaking hammer in each bucket as well. They, they were pretty affordable to do that, along with other things that other buildings might need to put in there, specific to their, to their buildings. Along with making sure that every classroom has a fully stocked first aid, I say kit, but really, you know, it's a baggie that the nurses put together with Band-Aids and gauze and Weber gloves, and the supplies that the nurses put in classrooms for students with diabetes, so the juices and the crackers and stuff. And you put all that stuff together and you kind of have a pretty functional emergency kit that hopefully you never have to use, but it's there if you do.
Does that kind of have like doorstops and-
So that would be one of the things that would be, would be an extra, would be the doorstops. We, we'd get a price on doorstops for, because the, each building's a little bit different, and so the doors that open in, getting the, the wedges underneath them would, would work, but here, they, they would have no purpose here, so. But it's, it's, the, the idea behind this, and we, and if you recall, when we first started talking about this in going into the enhanced lockdown, we said that this was something that we really needed to go to, and we, we sort of come to the consensus that it's, it, for the all intents and purposes, it's a one-time purchase and then supplementing as you go along. So yes, there will be a cost factor for the first purchase, but if we're, you know, we're hoping that we don't use a lot of the things, and the things that are perishable will have to come out at some point, but everything else that is, that has sustainability in there, you won't need to replace. The gloves shouldn't be, you know, they would be fine. There's a lot of stuff in there that would be a one-time purchase, and if we, if we don't use it, we, we, we wouldn't need to replace it. We just need to replace as we're going along, teachers would have to keep a record of, you know, what, what had been used, if we should have had an event, what needs to go in to replace it, like, like Josh mentioned. We, our nurses do give us a, a baggie that has gauze and has bandages and has tape and, and different things in there that would be part of that. We talked about the doorstops that, that you mentioned, Julie, as well, so there are a few other things that you would add in there. Different things for the older kids, different things for the younger kids. Josh mentioned the juice boxes and the, and the crackers and things that we have for students with, and, and sugar packets for, for students with diabetes. All the things would be, you know, sort of contained in that one, one packet, if you will. So this is, this is, we, Desi did a tremendous amount of work. This, we thought, was the best product dollar-wise, they're certainly less expensive, but doesn't have half the things that are in there. So when you add them, you come back to the same dollar amount. And I believe that there's a discounted rate, and we, I forget what the total number, a hundred and something total. So what we talked about was in classrooms, but for example, a, like an ancillary room, you might not need it. So for example, at the, at the, at the middle school for the, the central office, we probably might not need one, or we might just need one, not one for each of the offices and so forth. So, and I believe that the, the dollar amount on that was sixty-
I'm going to say it was sixty-four.
Sixty-four, but you get a reduced rate after, at so many numbers, and we would be over that, that dollar amount, so I don't know, maybe you have some information regarding that?
So we, we actually asked each one of the principals to give us a total number of active classrooms, we came up with a hundred and thirty-eight. But adding some extra buckets, I kind of added some more to each one, came up with a hundred and fifty-five for doors. And then we would need, you know, some funds too to buy the extra materials, just sticking with that part. So we anticipate the cost of the buckets for the entire district and the extra materials would not exceed ten thousand, just to have a, a, a range there. Because it will, you know, be different for the younger grades and the older grades, some of the individual items that we would need to put in each one of those buckets. For the doorstops, we're looking to purchase a total of four hundred and twenty. And figuring the dollar amount that I came up with, as far as a total amount being requested by the school committee, and for that as well, the one thousand fifty, was based on two dollars and fifty cents, but we actually can get it probably lower than that too, for the, for the doorstop, so. So we were looking for, to buy, to outfit all four school building classrooms, and some for some of the office, like one for central office and, and various offices, I did add some extras in. And for the doorstops would, the estimated cost would be up to twelve thousand, so that would be our limit. We're not expecting that it would be that, but just so that we don't have to keep coming back and forth, I thought that was reasonable. And that would be funded by the school choice revolving fund.
My only question, it all sounds great, I thought I read an article over the summer about Governor Baker approving like eighty-five million in grants for school safety.
Talk of that.
It's nothing then, I've been looking.
Did anyone come to it?
Yeah, I've been looking, I don't hear anything yet.
So there, so there is the possibility that there could be funding that would, that would help us with this.
Although there are some other safety things that we could also purchase, that we could utilize those grants for as well.
So you can buy them and then get reimbursed?
Well, the, the governor supposedly is-
No, no, we're buying them now.
No, we want to buy them now.
Yeah, right.
But what we're saying is that there may be money coming to the district in the form of the governor's budget with regards to safety, school safety. So that it could be offset down the road with, with money from the governor.
I think this, I mean, I, I think this sounds great, and I'm sure Mr. Vega did a lot of research. There was just an article, and the name of the school district is escaping me, but it was fairly local, that just did a program like this, and Lowe's donated all the buckets and gave them a reduced amount for the contents.
Right, so a lot of the contents that are in there Lowe's would, probably would not have, because it's a lot of medical stuff. We did reach out to Lowe's, we did a couple of other places and looked at it. The buckets that Lowe's would give you would not have, would not have the, you'd have to buy the, the seats as well and so forth. So the buckets that we got did not come, we got some buckets donated by Koopmans, which we, we plan on using. Covers for them, so when we're talking about some of the ancillary things that need to go into it, you can put them into the, into those buckets as well along in the classroom. As I said, there are, there are cheaper versions, but by the time you end up buying the additional stuff that you want to put in there, it's kind of a wash. I think it's important that everybody understands and the community understands that we believe that this to be a one-time purchase. It's not like we're going to buy these every year. We're going to buy them, they're going to be in a classroom, and we're hoping that we never, never have to use them. And the only thing that would be, I think it'd be replaced is, I think the food items in there are good for five years and, and so forth, and a few other things that might have to come out of there after five years, but other than that, so it's a, it is really a one-time purchase. The other piece of it is, we really need to get this done, and, and, you know, we've been looking and we, we started asking and, and going out and thinking about, well, maybe the PTO can go out and get bandages and somebody go out and get gauze pads, and it just doesn't make any sense. Let's just, we, it's imperative that we have these, unfortunately, it is, it's one of those things that you don't wish that you have to have in your building, but now you do. You just, you just do, so. And that was the, that was on the recommendation of the Safety Committee that's been formulated as, as well, and working on a new safety plan for the district as well.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I move that we purchase, we approve the purchase of safety buckets and doorstops for all four school building classrooms. The estimated cost is up to twelve thousand, will be funded by the school choice revolving fund.
Motion from Julie, or a second?
Second.
Second from Jillian, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Thank you, I think it, I think that's a prudent step, I think we need these in our buildings, and this is the best way to get them.
We had a couple capital items around safety, are those in play yet, the school cameras for here?
Oh, we're still working on that, yeah, there were a lot of capital projects that were approved, and unfortunately, the comp buys thing is just actually more complicated now.
Okay, can we use that as a, as a-
But we're working on that, we're going to be meeting with Zon in this week.
To come and revisit some of those things and, you know, talk about something.
Yeah, yeah, but we're moving along on some of them, but there were a whole bunch, as you know.
Yeah.
All at one time, yeah.
Mr. Romano.
Thank you. Where does that leave us? Athletic booster donation, DHS-
I'm very pleased, and I know we have some of our members of the athletic boosters here. This week, the district received a five thousand dollar donation from the Douglas Athletics Boosters, continuing their ongoing support of the student athletes here in Douglas. We recently received that, and I would like to acknowledge and thank the Douglas Boosters for their continued support. The discussion around this was that in order to try to help to drop user fee costs, that we were looking, looking to use this money to drop the user fees from two hundred and twenty-five dollars per, per student participation down to two hundred dollars per, per student participation. And so that was the, the reason for bringing that information forward, thank you to the boosters.
Thank you.
Again, for your continued support, and we would like to use that, that to offset the, the user fees and drive, bring them down to two hundred dollars.
So we've already been collecting just the two hundred from the, from the fall athletes?
I believe we have, yes.
Confused there for a second, I'm like, wait, I got my check for two hundred.
Right, so when we began the school year, we began the school year, it was that, it was, we were thinking it was going to be two hundred and twenty-five. The boosters had, had made a commitment to offset, the, the check has arrived, and so we're, we're able to use that money to offset the, the user fees at two hundred.
I know they're able to do that because of events like the Tiger Open on September twenty-second, right? One o'clock at Blackstone National, right? All three registrations, so, all you golfers out there, get in touch with the Athletic Boosters and get signed up for that, please, so, yeah.
And if you don't golf, you can come for dinner.
There you go.
What's for dinner? What is for dinner?
Steak.
Steak? Nice. We, I have a foursome ready to go, so we're, we're in, it won't be pretty, but we will be there.
All right, thank you.
But they need to, need a vote.
Need a vote on that, right?
We need a vote on the reducing to two hundred dollars.
So we, we don't have to vote on accepting the five thousand dollars, just the reducing the-
Yeah, just reducing the fee, yeah.
Okay. So, motion, anyone?
So I'll make a motion to reduce athletic fees from two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred dollars per student, per cap, per sport with no cap.
Yeah, for the Douglas High School.
For the Douglas DHS High School, yeah.
Great. Motion from Jillian, do I have a second? Second from Lisa, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous, thank you.
And again, thank you to the boosters.
Thank you. All right, last item on the agenda, our School Business and Operation Managers Report.
Okay, I want to report that the school bus transportation went very- Okay, I wanna report that the school bus transportation went very well beginning this year. I actually received twenty-three phone calls in the first few days, you know, with, you know, about bus stop changes and this and that, and all kinds of things. But everything was addressed, communicated right away.
Less than normal, or about normal, or...
Um, actually, it was kind of a lot for the very few days that we've had so far. But, you know, went with it and jumped in my car a bunch of times, and went and drove down roads and checked out stops and measured distances and dealt with every kind of situation you can imagine. But everything was addressed and communicated, and everybody ended up being happy. I can't always make everybody happy, but just ended up that way. Wanted to let you know that we will be doing the payroll encumbrances. As you know, that's a huge thing, that when we get that done, it shows everything, all the liabilities, because it's over eighty percent of the budget is salaries, we'll have that done, I'm hoping, by the end of September. So, when you get your next general fund budget report, that will be in there, and that will show, show up. And, you know, we have to move custodians and things, there's been a bunch of things that have changed, actually, since the budget was passed, so, and when the salary lines were passed. The Student Activity Fund audit is beginning next Tuesday, September tenth. So, that should be done shortly thereafter. That's basically just middle school and the high school, done by the auditors, same firm that, Middle East and Heath, that the town uses for the town audit. Actually, they're there next Tuesday for the town audit as well. And the end of the year report, I'll be working on that. I usually do seek an extension, because there's just never any time to get it done by when they want it, which is the end of September, because it takes about thirty, thirty-five hours to complete. So, last year, I got it done, actually, only a few days after. So, it was miraculous, the only time I've ever been able to do that, so I'm hoping for a good year this year as well. So, other than that, everything else is going well with cafeteria, school lunches, facilities. Mr. May spoke a lot about that, everything's moving along very well.
Before you go on, could I acknowledge a couple of things? So, Courtney has reached out a couple of times to Brett and John Furno, so we thank them for their participation. Neil at Tellstone and Renee at Tellstone have been very helpful. And Courtney fields all those phone calls, so I'm extremely grateful that she's fielding all those phone calls and does a great job with it, so I'd like to acknowledge her efforts around all of that as well for a good start to the school year with regards to buses.
Yeah, none of them went to you.
That's right, I liked that.
Because the next one up is them, and then it's you guys, so none of that had to happen, so that was good.
Thank you very much.
Great.
I do have transfers and reclassifications for you this evening, we'll do the reclassifications first. Reclassification is number one. First two was just that it was put in the one-two-one, which means primary school, instead of the one-two-two elementary school. And the next ones down, we, Jean actually asked us to change last year from where we had been putting the copying machines district-wide in the five-eight-five-oh-one, you know, kind of purchase, lease of equipment, but she wanted to change it to rentals and leases, so the first payments were made in the previous count, so we will be, I need to reclass those. Actually, then I'll have to ask you to do transfers as well, but I will do that at the next meeting.
Okay.
So, that's, that's the information for all of the reclasses.
Great.
Anybody have any questions on those?
Confer a motion on the reclassification, number one.
I'll make a motion to approve FY two thousand and nineteen reclass, number one. School committee meeting September fifth, two thousand and eighteen, that's where we are for FY nineteen.
Motion from Jillian, second, from anyone?
Second.
Second from Kelly. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, I have the budgetary transfer request, number one. And most of these are requests from administrators, and nothing really too exciting here. Yep, just basically requests from administrators.
Okay. Any questions on this? Okay, looking for a motion, then?
I move that we approve fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budgetary transfer request, number one, from school committee meeting September fifth, two thousand and eighteen.
All right, motion from Julie, or a second?
Second.
Second from Jillian, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good stuff, all right. Any topics not anticipated?
I just have one quick question, I know that you and I talked about this. The notices online, the first aid packet?
Yes, which school is doing that?
Primary. I pulled that one, some of it. I don't know, the reason that was through Stephanie Brown and John, we're doing partial.
Okay, I will try to get some information for you for the next meeting.
One day, maybe we'll do the middle school and the high school and the elementary school. Three steps.
What grade are your children in?
All right, anything else? Okay, well, thank you all for being here. And for those watching at home, thank you for sticking with us.
Motion to adjourn?
It is eight-thirty-seven, is what I got.
So, I move that we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn from Julie at eight-thirty-seven, second from Jillian. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned.